Good evening, everyone. The August 6th, 2025 Brookhaven Borough Council Meeting is now in session. Please rise and reply.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Good evening. The deceased residents for the month of September 25. Mary Skolski. Jane Evans. Donald Demudis. Michael Grogan. Tobias Gavin, our zoning officer, Bill Gavin's son. Thank you.
Mr. Willard, could you call the roll?
Mr. Heller is absent. Ms. Fullview.
Present.
Mrs. Heller.
Present.
Mr. DePlicky.
Here.
Ms. Sewicki.
Present.
Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Present.
Mayor Leslie.
Here.
Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Willward. Mrs. Boyle.
Present.
Chief Montella.
Here.
Chief Havick.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Uh, Ms. Smalls.
Good evening, everyone. I'll try to make this as quick as possible so we can watch that Phillies game. We had an amazing start to our school year at Coburn Elementary. On September 11th, Coburn hosted a well-attended back-to-school night. Parents had the opportunity to become acquainted with teachers, school programs, and expectations, and we were getting ready for an exciting school year. On September 15th, we had International Adopt Day. Coburn students celebrated International Adopt Day with a whole-school read-aloud of the book by Peter Reynolds, "The Dot," which encourages students to harness their creativity and embrace challenges and confidence as they make their mark on the world. A school-wide activity culminated in a beautiful art installation that is hung in our lobby on a 3D tree that was designed for that. And this is a reminder to think of each day as a new day and a chance to make it their very, very best day yet. On September 22nd, Coburn students participated in Pin Wheels for Peace to celebrate International Adopt Day. If you drove down Coburn Boulevard, you would see our students created pinwheels that wrote, had words and statements of peace on them. And then they planted them in the front of the building, and we left them there for a few days. Our Coburn staff and students had a wonderful, wonderful time on Saturday, September 27th, at the Brookhaven Family Day. We thank you for inviting the Pendelco staff and the Coburn PTL to participate in this amazing, amazing community event. On Friday, October 3rd, Coburn participated in the Sun Valley Homecoming Parade. Our joy ride and Kobe the Cougar was dancing, waving, and throwing candies at the crowd as our students did the Coburn chant, walking behind Kobe in his buggy. I want to take a moment to discuss the Leader in Me program with you. Students and staff continue to learn and apply the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, designed by Stephen Covey, which includes concepts like "begin with the end in mind," "put first things first," and "think win-win." This encourages student empowerment. Students take on leadership roles, manage their own learning through leadership and academic goal-setting, and develop skills for personal growth. It is a whole-child approach. The program addresses students' physical, mental, social, and economic well-being, recognizing their unique strengths and values to support their overall academic success, and it cultivates a positive and supportive school culture with a common language of leadership, fostering confidence, and community among school, staff, and family. So how is Coburn implementing Leader in Me? It's a marathon, not a sprint. Every building in our district is leading the charge in their own way. The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People is taught in the classroom and our guidance classroom. We have three action teams of staff and teachers called Culture, Leadership, and Academics. Our Culture team is planning to add some Leader in Me decor around the building and coordinating a Yo-Jo bullying assembly for Bully Prevention Month this month. Our Leadership team is creating leadership jobs around the building. For example, individual second-grade students are giving the weather report each day over the morning PA announcements. And service learning, we have a school-wide Pink Out Day to support United for Her, which supports women with breast cancer, happening in October, and individual grade-level service projects such as collecting old sneakers to recycle. Last but not least, our Academic Team, Schoolwide Week, a widely important goal, and ours is around our benchmark scores for math. They will have grade-level goals and eventually individual student goals. The coming events for Coburn, Wednesday, 10:08 is an 11:15 dismissal. We have Fire Prevention Day on 10:10 with our Brookhaven Fire Company. We have a full day in service on 10:17 where our staff will learn more about implementing and further implementing the Leader in Me program. We have our PTL Fall Fest on October 24th, and October 27th to October 31st, we will have Red Ribbon Week with themed days. And during that week, we will have our Pink Out Walk-a-Thon to celebrate and support breast cancer awareness. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Leslie.
I wanted to step up and let you all know I'm honored to be here tonight for the formal swearing-in of Officer Jonathan Barbosa. Jonathan is a resident of Delaware County and a graduate of PA Leadership Charter School and the Delaware County Municipal Police Academy. Jonathan was previously employed with the Chester City Police Department. John knows and deeply cares about Brookhaven. He has family roots here and has been a volunteer firefighter and EMT with the Brookhaven Fire Company since 2013. Jonathan is exactly the type of person that a community and department like ours needs. I know Jonathan has a long and fulfilling career ahead of him. Jonathan, please step forward to take your oath, and the Bible will be held by his mouth.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, County of Delaware, loyal to you. I, Jonathan Barbosa.
I, Jonathan Barbosa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of Brookhaven Borough.
And the ordinances of Brookhaven Borough.
And that I will discharge my duties.
No, discharge my duties.
As a full-time Brookhaven police officer.
As a full-time Brookhaven police officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce the law.
And enforce the law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color, sex.
Color, sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Witness my hand and the official seal, signed by Mayor Denise Leslie and John Willward, our Brookhaven Secretary. Congratulations.
Where's the rest of... We have more people. Okay, we got everybody.
That opens up the first public discussion.
I have one question, and it goes to enter. When are we supposed to get our use-of-not-impotencies for our units? We were told in August that that was your responsibility, and still have not gotten it.
All of those are on file here. You should have gotten them when the property is transferred. The properties can't be transferred without those, but I'll check with Sean in the morning and get back to you.
Peter Maseris, Marshall Road. I have a question just about procedures. Who votes? When a motion's made, who votes? Does the council president vote?
Yes, the council president can vote. Again, unless there is what we call a conflict of interest under the Ethics Act, as described by the Ethics Law, all seven council members are generally eligible to vote on any motion that is on the floor.
Okay, so like, my second part, I guess you answered it. Now, Mr. Pappas is presiding, so is he acting as the president?
That is correct. In the absence of the council president at a public meeting, the Borough Code authorizes the council vice president to serve in its stead and in its chair.
Okay, thank you. Only us two.
Hello, everyone. I am the lady 3608 Williamson Ave. Thanks for letting me talk today. Two weeks ago, I brought to the attention of John Willward the safety hazard of a storm sewer located outside of my property at 3608 Williamson Ave. The work was expedited, excuse me, due to the safety concerns raised. Thank you for your swift action. Unfortunately, I'm left with a driveway that is no longer uniformed. I am here today requesting approval for a small intervention such as sealing or a thin overlay to restore uniformity of my driveway. The uniformed surface ensures proper drainage, prolongs the life of the driveway, and reduces the likelihood of repeated municipal maintenance. This is a low-cost measure that protects both my property and the borough from future issues. I am happy to email you the pictures or ask Mr. Willward to forward them to the rest of the council. Thank you very much for your consideration.
We will take your request under advisement, sir. We'll take a look at it.
Sounds good. Appreciate it.
Do you have pictures of it, what it looked like before the work was done?
Yeah, there's a before and after that was sent to Mr. Willward, and I think it was sent to Mr. Catania.
I would include that in...
What was it?
I would include that in your email to John.
You do.
Okay.
Thank you so much. I can send it out to you.
Good evening. Jim Kelso, Alburn Avenue in Brookhaven. I'd like to read a few statements first. I will start with betrayal of duty. A council president has a fiduciary duty to act in the best interests of the borough and its residents. By suing the borough, the president is acting in opposition to this duty and creating an adversarial relationship with the municipality they are meant to lead. This puts their personal, financial gain, or other private interests ahead of the public good. It's also misuse of power and information. As a board member, the council president has access to confidential information, legal strategy, and behind-the-scenes discussions that can be used to benefit their lawsuit. This gives them an unfair advantage and puts the borough at a distinct disadvantage. I'm pretty sure by now, no matter where you stand in this situation, all the taxpayers have had enough. We expect transparent governance. We expect you to restore public trust, and tonight we need you to show us that you put our borough's stability first. The council president's position has become untenable. There's a clear and immediate conflict of interest. The facts are undeniable. Mr. Heller is suing our borough while simultaneously serving as council president over the very body he is taking to court. On top of that, he is running for mayor of the same municipality he is suing. This cannot continue. The law is clear. The council president serves at the pleasure of our council. I cite Section 1001 of Title 8 of the Pennsylvania Borough Code. You, our elected council members, appointed him, and you, without question, have the legal authority to remove him now, tonight. We, the people of Brookhaven, demand that you do exactly that. Here is the action we expect immediately. One of you needs to make a motion to remove Mr. Heller as council president. Follow that with a roll call. The votes of every council member's position is recorded for the public. Furthermore, due to the obvious spousal conflict of interest, Mrs. Heller must recuse herself entirely from voting or commenting on this matter. Thank you. We have done our homework, and this is how, as done by law, we await your action.
Anyone else for public discussion? Anyone else? All right, Chief Montella is out on the fire, so we're going to hold up on that. So we have Chief Havick.
He just went to.
He went also, okay.
Wait, he asked me to read his report.
Okay.
Members of council. For the month of September 2025, the officers of the Brookhaven Borough Police Department initiated or were assigned to a total of 617 calls for service, a total of 14 criminal cases and 14 non-traffic. Criminal cases were filed with the district court during the month. The noteworthy incidences were as follows. 12 theft, one aggravated assault, two vandalism, three fraud, one DUI, three public drunkenness, two disorderly conduct, one narcotics, eight animal complaints, three solicitor complaints, three noise complaints, 29 suspicious conditions, two harassment, 16 disturbance and domestic disputes, seven civil matters, seven mental health, 16 assist other departments, 21 alarms, 19 vehicle crashes, 13 hazardous conditions assist motorists cause, 170 business security checks, 21 adult arrests, zero juvenile arrests, 32 citations issued, nine parking violations, 76 traffic warnings issued, 3,573 miles driven on patrol. A consolidated uniform crime report summary and the department monthly call for service report are attached. Training, the following training activities occurred during the month. Detective Wetton attended monthly SWAT training. Chief Havick completed supervision of police personnel offered by Northwestern University Center for Public Safety. This is the first class in the university's nationally recognized police leadership program. Officer Connor completed patrol rifle instructor training. Officer Pazley completed Glock armor training, which allows him to maintain and repair our handguns. Officer Barbosa began the field training program and is progressing nicely. That's the end of this report.
Do you have a report to follow?
Oh, me? Am I next? Sorry. The only thing I have is our Veterans Day service will be Thursday, November 6th, here in the gym at 6:30 PM. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you, please.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rose.
Very well. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the October 6th Solicitors Report is on file with the Borough Secretary's office in the event any members of the public would care to review it. I do have a few salient points for council's consideration here this evening. Number one concerns the right-to-know-law appeal that was filed earlier this summer by Mr. Robert Jordan, who serves as president of the St. Joseph's Family Hope Center. My office had filed with the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records a memorandum of law and the borough's response to Mr. Jordan's right-to-know-law appeal, again, regarding the lease termination issues affecting the St. Joseph's Family Hope Center. I am pleased to advise council that on October 1st, a final determination was issued by the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records, denying Mr. Jordan's appeal and confirming and affirming the position of the borough. Number two, Civil Service Commission. My office has reviewed the Civil Service Commission's list of certified eligibility candidates for the position of full-time patrol officer. I have also been involved in multiple telephone conferences with Chief Havick regarding police manpower issues presently affecting the police department. I have made certain recommendations to council extending a conditional offer of employment for the candidate ranking number one on the eligibility list. I have drafted the appropriate motion for council's consideration that is, in fact, an action item for council's consideration under Vice President Pappas's report. Number three, Parks and Recreation Areas Ordinance. Earlier this month, the police department located some unhoused people sleeping in a tent at the OLC complex. There is currently no specific prohibition against camping or the erection of tents, canopies, canopies, other portable structures during daytime hours in borough parks. To address this particular deficiency, I have drafted an amendment to the borough's Parks and Recreation Ordinance. Said ordinance, again, will be subject to a motion to advertise during Councilman Burke's Ordinance Committee report. Number four, the Brookhaven Storage Land Development Project. Again, my office has drafted a resolution for council's consideration that is an action item authorizing a contingent escrow release for the completion of certain public improvements that have been made by the developer, subject, of course, to a receipt of a warranty maintenance bond and final PennDOT approval. That recommendation for the release of escrow in the amount of $37,119.50 has been reviewed and has also been recommended by the borough engineer. And therefore, if it is the pleasure of our council, a motion would be in order to adopt the resolution authorizing a contingent escrow release in the amount of $37,119.50 to Brookhaven Storage LLC. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, well, it's a motion and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Any questions?
I have one question. Was the... Charles, was the curb line... Wasn't there an issue with the curb line with its neighboring facility or the neighboring resident had an issue with the curb line? Was that addressed? This was like maybe a few months ago?
One of the conditions of those approvals is to get final PennDOT approval. There was an issue with PennDOT where the two sidewalks came together between the adjacent property and the Brookhaven Storage property. I'm being told that that has been resolved, but I want verification in writing that that has been done so.
Did we get that verification yet?
When PennDOT gives final approval, that's when we will release the escrow.
I do have one other question. Was this money in the budget to be released for this year? Do we know?
It is already being held in escrow through, I believe, yeah, it is a bond, so it will not come from general fund dollars.
So nothing's getting released until we get the documentation from PennDOT that that curb line has been approved?
That's correct. And a maintenance bond, 15% of the public improvement project.
If anyone opposes. Or say carries.
Fifth item on my agenda concerns electric bikes and electric scooters. Over the past several months, there has been much discussion in Delaware County and throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania regarding the safety aspects associated with the operation of electric scooters and electric bikes. Recently, Pennsylvania State Senator Tim Kearney has introduced legislation in the Pennsylvania General Assembly to further regulate their usage. But as the law presently stands in the Commonwealth, I want to make clear that electric scooters cannot be legally operated on public roads or sidewalks in the borough. They are only allowed to be operated on private property such as driveways or backyards. Anyone riding an electric bike must be 16 years of age. Electric bikes may be operated on a public street. Electric bikes may also be operated on a sidewalk, but only with the use of old-fashioned human power, meaning bipedaling. No electric assist is permitted on sidewalks. Equally important, all electric bikes must yield to pedestrians when operating on sidewalks. Again, we are waiting for further instructions from the Commonwealth. There is legislation pending, and depending on what that legislation says, we may then be able to consider the adoption of a local ordinance here, further refining those particular regulations.
Jay, I have a question about that because I... My understanding was that Haver Town passed one two weeks ago, three weeks ago, for 12 years younger, or 16 years and younger, and they must wear a helmet, and that the parents can be fined if the police locate them and see them not operating in what you had just described. So is there an ordinance that we can, before this law is passed, is there an ordinance that we can create or, you know, develop to protect them?
The concern I have with adopting an ordinance requiring, again, helmets on electric scooters is it may give the false impression that the borough is authorizing the usage of electric scooters on public streets or public sidewalks. Again, electric scooters can only be operated... Again, electric scooters can only be operated on private property. Now, with regard to electric bikes, that's something we can take a look at, meaning that, again, electric bikes can only be operated by those 16 years of age and older. So we can certainly consider the adoption of a local ordinance requiring helmets for 16 and 17-year-olds, again, that are operating an electric bicycle. So, again, my sense is the prudent thing may be to defer any action until we see precisely what comes out of the Pennsylvania General Assembly. It's my understanding that this is an issue that is hot to trot and that this is something that the General Assembly and Governor Shapiro are anxious to consider. There has been, as we know in the news media, multiple serious accidents involving youth operating electric scooters, which they shouldn't be, or operating, again, teenagers under age 16 and perhaps those 11, 12, again, operating electric bikes when by all they can't. Must be 16 to operate an electric bicycle in the Commonwealth. And again, that's something I'll certainly speak with the Chief of Police about. We may want to see about getting some more aggressive enforcement for the purposes of effectuating public safety here in the Borough. But I know this is an issue that is high on everybody's agenda, and like I said, I know in speaking with some of our legislators in Harrisburg, this is something they are looking to move on. It is a bipartisan issue, which is good, because trying to find bipartisan issues in Harrisburg and down in Washington DC today, they are few and far between. As we know, the nature of our politics today isn't particularly pleasant. And with that, Mr. President.
Yeah, roll forward. While they're running in electronic mode, are they supposed to obey specific traffic, specifically stop signs?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
That's why they're 16.
Yep. They still got to stop.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they still could have a driver's license at that age.
The other question, comments? That, Mr. Vice President, I can report general progress.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rose. Mr. Good time.
Thank you. A copy of our report is on file. Two things that you want to mention on it bring your attention. The first is the cooling tower replacement. The actual cooling tower has been delivered to the contractor. They expect to start installation at the end of this month. And local share account grant, this is gaming revenue. Each year this application period comes around, it's open now and it closes November 30th. It's basically any project that improves the quality of life in the Borough, up to $1 million. So we'll need to pass a resolution in November to authorize that application, so we should think of some project between now and then.
What are the, what are the requirements?
Improve the quality of life in the Borough. That's the criteria. Couple action items for consideration. The first is Jackson Drive Storm Store. First I want to read, we received six bids for this project, I want to read those bids into the record. We have Joseph J. Daniel LLC for $49,981.06. Premier Concrete Incorporated for $56,400. ADU Services, $57,400. Eagle Contracting and Landscaping for $65,095. DePaul and Company for $66,700. And NJ S Concrete for $77,240. Going to recommend the award to Joseph J. Daniel, the low bid of $49,981.06.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any questions? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next is a contract. We had bid for the annual maintenance contract. This is street sanitary and storm repair. We received two bids. They were within about 20% of each other. I'm going to recommend that we award to ADU Services in their low bid amount. It's, this is, number's going to be often, I'm going to read it, it's $851,205. But this is on as-needed basis, so we're going to recommend an award at their bid unit prices.
So moved.
Second motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I ask a question? How long is that contract go for? Is it two years, four years? I don't remember.
The way we put it out for bid, it's, it's a one-year contract with two optional one-year extensions. So next year, if council chooses to, they can extend it for a year, and then we have another year to accept another extension.
That's good to know.
At the pleasure of Borough council, we can extend that for an additional year, Janice, and then in 2026, extend it for one additional year to go into 2027.
Now, that's a good option for us. It'll save us some money, hopefully. Okay, thank you.
And the motion carries.
Next up, we have Mount Vernon Traffic Island Rain Garden. This is a PA Small Warren sewer grant we received a couple of years ago. This is the projects towards our MS4 obligations. We received four bids for this. Again, I'll read them. Joseph J. Daniel LLC for $55,747.45. Delaware Environmental Service for $81,888.88. ADU Services for $90,000. And Premier Concrete for $161,000. This is actually for a rain garden in Garzia Park and also for the traffic island at Mount Vernon and Upland Roads. I'm going to recommend award to Joseph J. Daniel LLC in the low bid amount of $55,747.45.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any questions?
Do you, do you know when it would be completed? This year or?
This year.
Okay.
It tends to happen this year. Yeah. And what we do, obviously, the grant was $391,000. This is only the first phase of it. We'll bid other projects in the next few months.
Okay.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, Our Lady of Charity Buildings. We sent an RFP for asbestos testing. We actually received five proposals back. The first one was really too low, so we basically threw them out. They didn't, they didn't meet the necessary standards. So we're going to recommend that we accept the proposal of CenterTech Environmental LLC in the amount of $5,430.
Okay, so moved.
This is for both the convent and the school.
This is the convent and the school, yes.
Go ahead, the second.
I'll second.
You have the second. Any questions? Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Does it have to be done this year?
Does it have to be done this year?
For the asbestos?
No, it's really just testing as we, as we move forward to.
No, I mean testing.
Yeah.
It'll be this year.
It doesn't have to be done this year, but I think it's for $5,700, $5,400. It may make sense just to get it done and out of the way.
Okay, well, that's what I thought, I just wanted to check.
We're basically, Janice, going to get an evaluation. Provide us with a report.
Right.
If we need remediation done, probably provide us with a, you know, a proposed cost estimate.
Yeah, it's safe to have testing.
We could always bid that out. We could ask Charles to get bid proposals for remediation for the sum of $5,000 to get an assessment, to get an evaluation done. That is a very attractive price.
Exactly. Thank you.
Chief Montella.
Are we spoke?
You good, sir? Okay.
Yes, we were waiting for you.
I'm sure you're all right, sir.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. Our monthly fire report for September 2025. Before I start off this meeting, could everybody here tonight, when they go home, say a prayer for a family in this Borough and for my firefighters who were just on the call and the police? Okay? We just had a tough one. Our fire incidents for the month were three. 26 non-fire, 22 calls for mutual aid, six drills, total of 57, 500 calls for the year, $4,000 loss on structure, $800,000 of property endangered. We had one minor firefighter injury on a training incident. Just had to see a doctor, but he's okay. 57 calls averaging nine firefighters, 290 hours in service, 3,019 for the year. Training with six calls, 20 average firefighters, 215 hours in service, 1,998. Incidents in Brookhaven Borough. We had two building fires, 523 Edgemont Avenue, the Pet Smart. We had a fire on the exterior of the building. Fire marshal will probably elaborate a little bit more on that report. Fire was contained, 4921 D'Amelio Drive. We had electrical outlet fire contained to the outlet. We have three accidents, Brookhaven Road and Woodland Avenue, Brookhaven Road, Chandler Drive, and we have pedestrian struck at 113 Washington Avenue. Assisted Upland Fire Company, 301 Glenway Avenue, on a commercial building fire. Assisted Middletown Fire Company at 17 Windmore Drive, on a building fire. Assisted Marcus Hook on a building fire, 501 Marcus Street. Lower Chichester Fire Department on building fire at 1210 Chestnut Street. Our training was large area search. We have a new Anderson Rescue Bag. We did some training with that new bag that we purchased on a grant. We had training for natural gas, CO, electric, and solar emergencies, and we had SCBA training as well, preparing some of our people to take a professional certification class. We attended the Brookhaven Family Day. It's a great day as usual. The 9/11 memorial service, we attended that. We just attended the Sun Valley Homecoming Parade, and we did attend the Borough's golf outing at Oliver's in Wilmington. Everybody had a good time at that as well. We set up all our visits for Fire Prevention Week. We have visits, visits coming up in all the schools, daycares, Elwin daycare coming up this week. It's a really busy week for the fire company this week. Another thing, I'll give you a quick update on the ALS chase car, where we're at with that. They got their license last week for the purchase of the drugs that the chase car will carry, and they started.
Rocky Run did, right? Rocky Run?
Rocky Run, correct. Rocky Run Fire Company, they got that. That came in last week. We gave them a lease user agreement for our vehicle, which the fire company purchased as partners in this ALS chase car thing that the Borough is going to be partners with Rocky Run Fire Company and Edgemont Fire Company. The Borough should have a contract before the next meeting, hopefully at the next meeting that you guys can look at. I'm not going to hold it to a thing, but we plan on being up in service in November. I don't have, I don't want to say a date, but we're hoping November. It's been a long haul, people that have been involved, you guys all know about all the meetings that we've all been attending and the Borough officials and all that, for this to get the best product on the street for our, our people, our residents, at the best cost. But the cost isn't why we went this route. It's just, we feel Fire Department EMS is way better in privatizing, and you have no control, no say. So this, we felt like it was a better option. They're going to give their proposal to, Rocky Run will give it to the Borough for you guys to read over, and Jay can look at it, and if you want to sign payments, I don't know how they're going to set that up. I told them it'd probably be easier to do like quarterly versus writing checks every month. Makes it easier, we'll keep it cleaner, I think. But that's for you guys to get, and hopefully we can get that in the very near future. Our, like I said, our vehicle's going to be turned over to them, and they'll get the decals on it and all that stuff, so we're getting ready to go. We'll have two cars. It'll be a good thing. They have a car, we have a car. All going for the better of everybody, so you got to have a backup. And that's, that's kind of where we're at right now. All their licensers have been filed for, everything, like DEA, that's what they're waiting on, DEA, and drugs were the big thing to get, you know, to buy drugs, you got to have that license. That was a big holdup. And they got that done, so the last thing will be the contract signed, and then they get their license certif, their chase cars certified, just like we get our ambulance certified by the EHS Commission, Department of Health, come out and inspect and make sure they're carrying everything they need and all that. But that's kind of where we're at now. Does anybody have any questions for me of what it, anything, that somebody would be, go ahead, Peter? Yeah, it's Rocky Run's, they're going to be the paramedic license.
There's one that's in the hospital?
There's one near the hospital. The car in the daytime will be staged in Middletown Firehouse, which is just right up the street. So that's where it'll stay during the day, and night it'll be sleeping orders at the fire companies. But at that time of night, when they go back at 10 o'clock, traffic is really not a problem at that time of night. So it'll have Rocky Run will be on it, and it'll have Brookhaven somewhere on the car that serves, serves Brookhaven though. So, any other questions? I mean, I can give you the answers, anything I, I know, but this has been a long process, and we tried to work with Riddle the best we could, hoping that they could come through, but we know that they gave us two different proposals, and ours is still coming under a little bit from what they, they came at. Riddle seems like now that they know that we're moving forward, that Riddle's going to change maybe their delivery model out there, and kind of want to be a player with us, which is actually a good thing, because they could be a backup to us.
Yeah, good.
So right now, just so you guys know, I'll explain this to you, how the paramedic coverage works, okay? Kind of like the ambulance. Brookhaven's tied up, our two ambulances are tied up, you get Aston. Aston's two ambulances are tied up, you get Rocky Run. Rocky Run's tied up, you get Swat. Swatmore's tied up, you get Media. So it's the same type of thing that exists for the paramedic chase car. Our chase car will be in Middletown right there, it's tied up, we still go to Aston, which was our old Crozier car, which distance are almost identical. So Aston backs up, and after Aston backs up, it'd either be Riddle's paramedic or Media's paramedic, and then Swatmore now has a paramedic unit up, which is that far this way. So we're protected all the way around, with paramedic service being Swatmore stepped up and got a paramedic car too. So they have one on a truck and in the car. So we got, we got a pretty good amount, and we still have the use of Chester's third-party people, the MSC. They can still come in too, should all of them be tied up. We always have somebody, and actually Chichester has a paramedic unit. So that's where we're at with that. Anybody, any questions like that? You just have to have your own primary unit, and then all the secondaries can come all you want. They can't charge you any money or us any money or stuff like that. Our ambulance controls, the ambulance that takes you to the hospital controls the building, okay? So just remember that. That's another thing. We got contracts signed with all these other ambulances that come into Brookhaven to protect everybody. You, me, council, everybody.
Yeah.
Because you can get some hefty bills.
Yes, you can.
Crozier, when they used to come in, they would send those for $8,000 to take you to the hospital. So.
So obviously we have the ambulance membership kind of right now.
Correct.
Is this going to be, are we supposed to subscribe to the ambulance membership for this, or is this going to be taxed, like through our taxes?
You're still subscribed through Brookhaven. We will always be your transport company.
Okay.
So you're, right now, you pay your ambulance fee, your subscription. Aston has a mutual aid agreement with us, Rocky Run does, Swatmore does. So it's like you paid that as honor for all them people to pick you up. So they can't come in and say, hey, we're charging you $6,000 for this ride, and Brookhaven charged you $800 for the ride. We were able to get contracts signed if we, so our subscription goes to our ambulance building outfit and Aston's ambulance building outfit, because we go over there and pick a lot of people up in Aston too. We go to a lot of places. It's just like I said, you got to understand how this works. It just, you got to go, you can't deny an ambulance call. You have to respond, just like the fire trucks can't deny where we go. If we get called, we have a duty to respond, just like that, but we have backup on backup, so. And then you're protected, should you get the ambulance subscription, which I highly encourage everybody. It's basically a, a small insurance policy to protect you, so that's what it's for.
Do you have an idea of what percentage of our residents subscribe to the ambulance?
Uh, no, I think you might have that, right? It's probably, it's over, I think it's over 50%, which is high.
It's around 54%.
Yeah, which is high. But believe it or not, you go to all the towns and people's, like their fire departments and their ambulances get like 20%. So, I mean, it'd be great if everybody did, but, you know, you don't. But they, if you're not protected, then you will get that larger bill, so.
Cheap insurance policy.
It's real cheap insurance policy is what it is. So, but, I mean.
Will we get that paper in mail for the fire?
Yeah, you always get the ambulance drive thing comes out, yeah, so.
And that's covering all that?
That's protecting you, yeah, no matter if Brookhaven comes, Aston comes, Swatmore comes, Rocky Run comes. So they'll bill you, but they can't bill you any extra money. Follow what I said? So if you're a subscriber, usually what happens is your insurance company pays, you send the money to whoever transported you, and then you're out of that out of pocket. So if your bill was $2,000 and your insurance paid us 80 bucks, Brookhaven gets 80 bucks, that's it. We can't come after you for the rest of the money because you're an ambulance. So it really. So it really, it's really a cheap insurance policy. So that's kind of how it all works.
Chief, can you subscribe online or?
Uh.
How do you go about it?
Sometimes we have issues with online, but like if you need an ambulance subscription, you can call the firehouse. And our guy that does the ambulance drive, he's good. He'll drive it right to your house. I mean, we'll make arrangements to get it. If you want it bad enough, we'll get it to you somehow or another. Whether he'll hand deliver, he's really good, the guy that runs our subscription. He's looking out for everybody. We really want you to have it, plus makes sure all of your contact information is correct too.
How often do you pay for?
Once a year.
Annual payment?
Yeah, so usually the fire's in January and usually April. April is EMS. May first is EMS, so. But thirty-two, you want to look for, right? So it's, you know, just, just information for you guys to know that we have our run card set up so somebody's always coming. And it follows that, these guys are tied up, they can't come, we can't come, then the next guy. And it's the same, the paramedics will do the same thing. But you have to have a primary provider for ALS and that's what the boroughs need to engage in, which it's been a long, it's been a long haul. I think we were there and we took longer than other people did, but I think we did our homework the best. So like I said, fire department based is a little better. So I'll give you the ambulance stats for the month. Two thousand twenty-five September, the ambulance did two hundred and eleven ambulance calls. We transported a hundred and thirty-seven people to the hospital. Hundred and eighteen were ALS, ninety-three BLS, and the ambulance has answered two thousand three hundred and eighty-three ambulance calls so far this year. So that's it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. All right. From Mr. Howard's report, I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August two thousand twenty-five council meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Motion carries. I have another motion to approve the minutes for the September two thousand twenty-five.
You have to vote on the motion. We have to, you had a second and you didn't.
Oh, sorry. Motion carries.
We didn't even.
Okay, let's start over again here. Motion to approve the minutes for the August two thousand twenty-five council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, Jess.
No, you're welcome.
Motion to approve the minutes for the September twenty twenty-five council meetings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will have an executive session after tonight's meeting for personnel issues and litigation issues. Ms. Sweeney?
Yes, I do have a bill list tonight that the treasurer would like us to approve. General fund, six hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Sewer fund, seventeen thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. Road fund, four thousand six hundred seventeen dollars. Trash fund, seven hundred dollars and eighty cents. For a total of seven hundred and ten thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents for October sixth. So I am making the motion that we do approve the bill list tonight.
Just a quick question, because on this one, our numbers are different. For the total payments, it was different.
The numbers were.
The road fund was different.
We had to add both.
Gotcha, gotcha.
It was easier adding those two numbers.
Thank you.
That's why we did it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Mrs. Fool.
The next Sustainability Committee meeting will be held on October fourteenth at seven PM. And also, the next Sustainability Committee hosted talk will be on October twenty-sixth at one PM in the community room and it's free and open to everyone. It's going to be very interesting. Our very own Kat Vicente will, who is an expert on soil, will be giving a talk on called Soil, A Universe Beneath Our Feet. So I invite everyone to attend and it's, it is super interesting. You would never guess that soil is so interesting, but it is. And that's, that's it for me.
Okay, Mrs. Howard.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Town Watch for always remembering September eleventh and hosting the beautiful memorial service each year. And I want to congratulate Town Watch for celebrating thirty years this year. So thank you for John Woolworth's leadership. He has been keeping strong with that amazing group of individuals. Sticking with Town Watch, please save the date for the craft fair, which is going to be held on Saturday, the twenty-ninth. It's going to be the, I'm sorry, November twenty-ninth, from nine AM to three PM and it's in the gym. And this will be the twenty-eighth craft fair that Town Watch has been hosting. So again, thank you so much. The next meeting for Town Watch is going to be Thursday, October twenty-third at six thirty PM. The parade committee met on September the seventeenth at seven thirty. We have identified two judges so far for the, the grandstand and for the lineup. All of our lineups continue to grow bigger and bigger each year, so we keep trying with new participants. Linda does an amazing job with going out there and getting the best participants that we can have. We're keeping the theme similar to what we've done all this year, which is the eightieth anniversary for Brookhaven. And so for that, we have decided to have all of our grand marshals be anyone that has been signed up that are celebrating ninety-five plus years and, and we already have five people so far that are signed up.
Gee whiz.
I know, right?
Well.
And.
Can't have my mother, she has to.
But we can always not remember her, though. We can always remember her. And that we have partnered with Bargain and they're giving us a van for anyone that wants to participate so that they can ride along in the parade. We've also expanded our Santa Village. We have up to eight vendors that are signed up, which will be in the Coburn parking lot between one PM and five PM to satisfy any of your shopping and refreshment needs. The, the parade will kick off. It's going to be on Saturday, November the twenty-second and kickoff time for the parade is two o'clock from OLC and it ends at Coburn, where the grandstand is. So hopefully everyone will come out and enjoy. We have our next meeting, which is Wednesday, the eighth of this month, and we'll be going to bi-weekly meetings. Our fall aging occurred on Sunday, the twenty-first of September with a wonderful fall craft. It was some type of candy jar. Our next artful aging is going to be on Sunday, the twelfth, and the craft is going to be pumpkin buttons. So anyone that's interested can sign up at the office for that. Tom and I met with Mary Zimmer and Andrew Hutt about Brookhaven basketball on Tuesday, nine sixteen. We talked about looking at the grades between kindergarten and fifth grade. We established that the kindergarten will be just concentrating on clinical as first and second grade is going to be looking at team practices and instructional scrimmages, as well as third to fifth grade is going to be instructional, the basic fundamentals, and intro to weekend games. They've established a four-member leadership that's going to be under the rec board for the borough insurance, which will be provided, the insurance rider under the rec board. So we're looking at doing some sign-ups and some scrimmages, not scrimmages, I'm sorry, skills dates for December. They had a table at Family Day and it looked like they had a good amount of people signing up, but it will not start until the week of January fifth. And they'll go until the middle to the end of March. And we are working with our school district to provide some additional nights during the week to help with some of their practices. The check meeting met on November twenty, I'm sorry, on September twenty-third. We concentrated on new updates to the website that will be implemented in two thousand twenty-six, focusing on celebrating our community, as well as we worked on our newsletter. The next meetings will be on Tuesday, the ninth, and on, I'm sorry, Thursday, the ninth of October and Tuesday, October twenty-eighth at six thirty. I know that Chief Montella mentioned this, but October is Fire Prevention Month. Make sure you're testing those smoke detectors. You have all your escape plans, especially making sure that there's two means of exit, safely cooking. But make sure you check out our Fire Marshal's Corner on the website. He has a lot of useful and helpful information. One other thing from the Fire Department, the Faith Community Church is again sponsoring the Brookhaven 5K Run on Sunday, October twenty-sixth, from nine AM to twelve PM. And all their proceeds go directly to the Fire Department, so we please come out. You don't have to run, you can walk sometimes, you know, that's like the best part of it. So I do have some other updates for the rec board, but before I get into that, I, I want to thank Tom and the entire rec board, as well as the Family Day Committee for an amazing Family Day this year. We had such a great day with great folks, with great vendors. I think it was one of our biggest events that we had so far. We had a lot of help from our Honor Society Kids from Sun Valley, so it was great seeing them engaging and helping the vendors coming in and set up. Next year, we are going to be implementing wristbands as well as our tickets. There was a lot of unnecessary information that was being put out. You're not, what's the word? I guess it wasn't verified through Facebook, let's just leave it at that. So that's one thing. But again, I want to thank everyone that participated, all of our vendors. We can't do this without all of our vendors. We can't do it without Public Works, without Harry, without the Fire Department, the Police Department, and all of our volunteers. It was really a great day. We had over two thousand people that participated and it was a beautiful day. So thank you, everyone, for that. We have upcoming, we have our concert in the park, which is going to be Saturday, October eighteenth at seven PM at Eaton Park, and that's going to be a touch of the blues, so it's going to be a little bit of a jazz. This was one of the concerts that was rained out unfortunately during the summer and we're having our first October concert, so hopefully it'll be a really nice night. We also have trunk or treat that's going to be occurring on Saturday, the twenty-fifth of October, from one to three. Rang date is going to be ten twenty-six. All signup information is on the website, so please go there. We have a murder mystery dinner on Friday, the fourteenth of November. It's going to be a wonderful night, so please come out and support that as well. So that is, oh, I can't forget my birthdays. So I do have a few belated birthdays and I have some upcoming birthdays. So I want to wish a belated birthday to Pat in the office, as well as Police Officer Duff. We also have Ms. Solicki here, who had a birthday this past weekend. We have Sergeant Martin, that's coming up in October, as well as one of our Public Works folks, Andrew Guthrie, in October as well. So we wish them all a happy birthday. As the chief said, please go home, say a few prayers for that family tonight, on that last call that they just had. So with that, I have nothing else to report at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Howard. I attended a workplace safety meeting this month. Always laid it here that there was no accidents with borough vehicles, nor was there any personal injury between the Fire Department, Public Works, the Police Department, and the office staff. I have a motion to accept the resignation of Officer James Kelso as a member of the Brookhaven Police Department, effective September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
Do you want a motion?
It's a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We should say with regret.
Yes.
It's always sorry to see one of our officers go. But they usually have a reason for a family situation.
I have a motion to ratify the notification to the Civil Service Commission for an existing vacancy in the Police Department and the request for a certification of a hiring eligibility list.
All motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to extend a conditional offer of employment to Michelle Surplus as a full-time police officer contingent on the successful completion of a medical examination, physical logical examination, and Act Fifty-seven background inquiry.
Second.
I, I have a question. Would she ever, the Civil Service gave her authorization? I mean, the same way we're going for this list?
Yes.
Okay, because I haven't, I never heard of that. I never heard of it even being.
Yes, she is at the top of the eligibility list.
Okay, well, I didn't know because I have, I haven't seen the list.
Which has been certified by the Civil Service Commission.
Just wanted to make sure, because I hadn't heard of that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. My last action item. Motion to approve Lori Dipbrenner as a substitute crossing guard at the pay rate of fourteen dollars and fifty-two cents per hour.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We always need crossing guards. We always need, she's a substitute.
Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The ordinance committee did not meet in person in September. We did exchange emails once. The upcoming ordinance that I'm going to make a motion to advertise came to our attention. The ordinance committee will meet again next Thursday, that is October the sixteenth, at six thirty PM here in the Borough Hall. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertisement of an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter one zero six two of the, excuse me, of the codified ordinances of the Borough of Brookhaven entitled Parks and Recreation Areas to prohibit the erection and/or maintenance of tents, canopies, cabanas, portable structures, or other similar mobile sleeping or camping facilities in any borough park or recreational area without the previously obtained consent of the borough.
Seconded.
I'll make, you took the motion?
He made the motion.
I made the motion.
He made the motion. I'll second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Please, please.
Good evening. I again, I'm going to start with Family Day. Family Day, once again, was very well-run and a fun event as always. So I want to send thank yous to all the volunteers and special thanks to our Recreation Board, President Tom Dykes, Sherry Heller, Charles, Jim, Donna, Lois, Marie, and Jess. Also, thank you to Harry Swaincham, he busts his hump on those days. The Police Department and Fire Company Fifty-two for participating, as well as our Public Works crews for showing up, driving the van back and forth from Coburn with all our spectators at the event. Trash and recycling, reminding everybody, I, there will be an electronics and paper shredding event scheduled for November fifteenth from nine AM to noon at Coburn Parking Lot. So any paper product or it's really anything with a cord, except major appliances, you can bring in for recycling. Public Works, I do, just to give an early heads up, leaf collection is to begin with Zone One in the third week of November. Please refer to the Borough website, the calendar, the newsletter to find out what zone you're in and which week your leaves are scheduled to be picked up. I have two action items at this time with the Public Works. My first motion, I brought this up in September council meeting. Due to three seasonal employees going back to college, they could use another seasonal employee to begin, you know, to join into the current hundred and twenty-day window that we approved last month.
So you only have one person?
Only one person coming back right now. Okay, so motion to hire seasonal employee Nolan Denny for a hundred and twenty days at the twenty-two dollars an hour, effective September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the second. And the second motion, there's some repair work necessary at the small garage at the Public Works, so this motion is to approve Joseph J. Danielle LLC, a Core Stars contractor, to make safety and related structural repairs to the small garage at a quote cost of eight thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars fifty cents.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Do you know when it's going to be finished?
It's kind of started, I don't know exactly when it's finished.
Okay, that's fine, I wasn't sure.
Mr. Leslie.
What?
What's the score? The bad guys.
The bad guys.
Fire residents, it's fire prevention month, fire prevention week, please change your smoke detector batteries. If they're old, discolored, get new ones, please. Thank you.
How often should you change it?
Well, they have the ten-year ones, but if it's discolored, get a new one, Janice.
Okay, I'll buy another.
Thanks, Charles.
I'll be sure.
Charles, am I right in reading this, that there now is, you're going to have to throw the smoke detector out, the batteries are going to be sealed inside them? Have you heard this?
I've seen stuff out there, yes, but I don't know what the outcome was, what's going to happen.
So I'm not the only person who knows about it, then?
Correct.
Thank you.
Hopefully, Lowe's takes them back.
We do.
Yeah.
We dispose of them appropriately.
That's good.
Correct, yeah.
Well, it depends.
They have a box on the inside when you go in the door there.
Correct, but you also have to remove the battery that's inside, because if you can't go through in the trash, because then it becomes a hazmat issue. I got you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Steve, did you want to come up and discuss the emergency management for a moment, please? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Are we in trouble?
No, no.
Hello, council, hello, public. Real quick, just wanted to let you guys know, we are one of the only municipalities in the state that's part of a community rating system. There's a couple other ones that are picking up now. Quick and short, it's like added floodplain projects and ordinances that we do to, you know, keep us safer from flooding, be more prepared, stuff like that. Took us nine months, but we got reapproved for another five years, so we'll get the official numbers probably in a week or so, but anybody that has a National Flood Insurance Program policy, they'll save five percent for us doing that, so. That was a big project, thank you for your help, and just wanted to let you know about.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all the work that you put into it, because I know that nine months was very, very brutal.
Yeah, no problem.
Second public discussion is open.
Hi, my name's Ruth Williams, I'm from Little Hilton, and I just wanted to know, I'm interested if any of you are going to respond to Mr. Kelso.
That's what the executive session's going to be tonight.
But you didn't even tell him that. You just, nobody said anything. Somebody should have said.
I agree at the time. But I appreciate that. Somebody's paying attention.
There we are. That's all I have, I just thought it was rude to order.
It's Bob, what's it from, Little Lake Drive. The only question I have, I guess it's for Dan, it's about the ordinance that was proposed tonight, and it's going to be advertised. You specifically stated about tents, canopies, in the recreational areas and parks. I think I know the gist of it, but Recreation Area also covers ballfields. In the summertime, when it's hot, a lot of people put canopies on, so you might want to tweak that a little bit to allow that.
Again, that is without, with the prior approval of council. And again, I believe in the past, with regard to the baseball fields, canopies are acceptable, again, during the daylight hours when there are games in play, so that will continue.
The ordinance does not say that.
No, there is, the section, the general section of the ordinance does indicate that, again, those types of prohibitions would occur without the prior approval of council. And again, council has approved that in the past, the canopies, you know, at the time in the athletic fields, when there are athletic competition taking place, that will continue in the future.
Thank you.
Tom Dykes, Brookhaven, Westbrook Haven Road. So just to fill everybody in on something that's going on, so Family Day was unlabelable. If it wasn't for the Family Day Committee, Public Works, and Council, Harry, and all sorts of other people doing things, they never would come together. I just coordinate and get everybody together. Sherry has now, we kind of mold everybody together and they keep going. It's really, really well, they work really well. Sun Valley was amazing this year. They got us almost a dozen kids to come over, and they helped out for the day with helping the vendors, the kids at the events, really, really good. So we gave out to the residents, the vendors, and the volunteers over twenty-two hundred tickets. I won't forget the firemen, please, I forgot, I didn't see over there, Rob, Bobby was hiding. Thank you for your day, that was great. So it was really good that way. Raffle tickets were still, or some people have not picked up their raffle prizes, they can still pick them up during this week at the office, they'll be getting them for them. I want to expand a little bit on what Sherry was saying about going back to the wristbands. We got them right from the wristbands because we wanted to make it a little overnight, a little more free and easy to go for people to go through. We had a number of people this year, somewhere between almost a dozen people, who were responding anonymously to response to announcements about, "Sign up for your Family Day tickets, make sure you get your Family Day tickets, please get your Family Day tickets." Going, "Oh, you don't need to sign up for Family Days, just for food and hamburgers, you don't need to worry about that." I would respond back to them going, "We need to know how many people are coming, so we know how much food to order, we know how much to tell our vendors to bring for them to hand out to people." Even asking people nicely to stop giving out information that was not true, they continued doing it. So because of that, we're now going back to the wristbands, and the wristbands will now be for everything. So if you want to get a pretzel, you want to get a sausage, you want to get pizza, you want to ride on the rides, then now have to have a wristband. So if anybody wants to complain about that, find out who those anonymous people were, and please let them know, thanks to them, okay? But it was really, other than that, it was really, really good. Flea Market went on, we had twenty-nine tables, it was a nice turnout, everybody had a good time. Golf outing on Sunday, we had thirty-two people there, Rob, is that what it was, I think Jim said? Something like that? Yeah, it was missing four, or two different foursomes, one for a wedding, one for another family event, so unfortunately, they didn't have that. Artful aging's been going on. The concert in the park on the eighteenth, as Sherry said, is a touch of the blues, lots of fun stuff, and we're going to actually light the park up, so it'll be, we'll kind of get the area where we usually sit up, holiday lights, Christmas, white lights lit up, so everybody can see where they're going, what's happening, and doing that kind of stuff, so it'll be lots of fun. It should be a nice thing. Just remember to bring a blanket if you want, to wrap up, a jacket, but it's still fun. Then the snack bar will be open. Truck or treat is the twenty-fifth, as of right now, Mondays and Wednesdays, at lunchtime and in the evening, we're still doing sign-ups for that. As of right now, we have over a hundred and ninety children, but we only have seven people who want to do trunks. So we're asking people to either sign up for a trunk, or even better, if you'd like to just come up and you don't think you're artistic enough to do a trunk, come up, bring a table, and just hand out candy to the table, just put a little trinket on there, do that. It's, remember, it's always for the kids, it's not for anybody else, it's for the kids, and that's what we're going for. So we're looking for that to happen. We're trying to see if we can get some of the seniors to come over. We'll provide tables and help get candy out for them so they can hand out candy, so they can see the kids in costume. That's something a lot of seniors like to see. Murder mystery dinner on the fourteenth, it's a dictatorship of murder, so it's a Charles Dickens theme with that. Tickets are also Monday and Wednesday, lunch at evenings, that all through October, and the first two weeks in November. Parade, just to follow up on that, besides having the parade in Santa's, and the whole thing, Santa's Village, we have, right now, I have ten different vendors coming in, all different kinds of things, so it should be lots of fun. And we're actually telling the vendors to set up by eleven, between eleven and twelve, so people can come up before the parade actually gets up there and can do some shopping, so it should be lots of fun. We have the senior luncheon on December the seventh. Those tickets will be starting to be given out on the beginning of November. Sounds strange saying that now, but that's only a couple of weeks away. So that is a free event for Brookhaven residents that are sixty-two and over, so we need to get everybody signed up for that. And for the parade and the senior luncheon, we're honoring our residents who are ninety-five and above this year. We're going to try and do that on an annual basis, but do that. So if you know of anybody who lives in Brookhaven and is ninety-five and older, please let us know, see if they would like to join us for the parade, if they're definitely going to be there for the senior luncheon, it'd be lots of fun that way. And then December the seventh is a tree lighting service. Out back, tree lighting, it's always fun, Coburn Chorus will be here, Refreshments and Photos with Santa will be inside, and we've got a few ideas that we're planning working on to make a little difference this year, so we'll see what's going on. So that's my life for the next two months. I don't know about the rest of it, but I couldn't do all this without the rec board, without Sherry, without all the volunteers that help us out. So if you can volunteer, please come out and volunteer. We need as many volunteers for everything all across the borough, for everything, all the way from the fire company, down to the rec board, to baseball and softball, and now coming up with basketball and doing all sorts of fun stuff. We can't do it all without, we can't do all of this without help, so please, 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 think about volunteering. If you want to help with Family Day, it's one hour a month, once a month for the year. All I ask you to do is then help that day, so it's not like it's a huge commitment. All right? Thank you, council, I appreciate everything you guys do, I'll see you later.
Thank you, Tom.
Jonathan Lee, I have a question for you, Jay. Pending this lawsuit with Mr. Heller, the council president, as the suing vice, and the borough, wouldn't it be a conflict if, first of all, with this executive session you have to discuss litigation, would she be allowed to attend? And if so, can you explain to me legally how she's able to?
I'm not attending, and that was already discussed prior. I don't really care, but you're directing and talking about me as I'm not here, so I will not be attending.
Because that's why I was asking Mr. Solicitor.
That's okay.
Legally, his advice.
Yes. Go ahead, Jay, you can ask.
We will be having an executive session this evening, again, to discuss what we call litigation issues, one of those being, obviously, Mr. Heller's lawsuit that is recently filed with the borough, and also personnel issues, which, again, concerns council as a whole and potential reorganization issues. I have recommended that Mrs. Heller not attend that executive session, and apparently, Mrs. Heller is in agreement with that recommendation, so she will not be participating in the executive session that will occur immediately after the conclusion of this public meeting.
And from here on out, anything pertaining to this matter, still excluded?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Anything from the council? I'll place a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.